All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Committee of the Whole this evening, which is May the 10th, 2023. We have trustees both at the table as well as online. I know that trustee, sorry, Tanya, Amy, and Donna are joining us online. And Jean, Joanna, Carol, Kelly, and my, oh, and Shinhee and myself are in person. So. I haven't heard, Navid, are you online? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
He's not online yet.
Okay, hopefully he'll be joining us later. So, welcome, everyone, to the committee of the whole. Everyone is present apart from trustee Ahmed, who hopefully will be joining us later, and Curtis, who's here this evening from your team?
We have Associate Director Salmini, and we have, of course, Superintendent Nagoy, Jay Chantabah, and we have Fred Tebow. Those are here to support the items on the meeting tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, we will start with the land acknowledgement, and Joanna is going to read it for us tonight.
Good evening. Halton, as we know, today is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Audinwandran, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions, land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thanks, Joanna. All right, so we're now up to approval of the agenda. If everyone can have a look over the agenda items that are before you this evening. Hopefully, you've had a look because I know it's been updated quite recently. So, to that point, Jean, would you like to approve the agenda this evening?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, is there any objections to approving the agenda this evening? Wonderful. Seeing none, the agenda is approved, and that brings us to our consent agenda, where we have the draft minutes of the Committee of the Whole from April the 26th, as well as the order paper. Shinhee, would you like to approve the consent agenda items this evening?
Yes, I will.
All right. Is there any points of discussion for this consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as seen on the agenda? Once again, wonderful, the consent agenda is approved. All right, that brings us up to our discussion items for this evening, and we are going to start with some policy and procedural updates, starting off with Colette, and she is going to talk a little bit about the Special Education Advisory Committee Policy and Governance Procedure. Is there anything you have to talk to us about?
Good evening, everyone. There was very minor updates to the policy, but I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has one.
Tanya?
Yeah. Thank you. I do have a question, and I think this is more of a larger problem with all our policies, is we use the term "the board," the Board of Trustees, HDSP, and we're not always consistent with what it means. So, when I was going through this, I noticed that we got a whole lot better at defining the two. So, my question is, when it says "the board," are we referring to the Board of Trustees, or is it the board as a school board? Yeah, I just get, I get a little confused when I read through this, and then when I try to compare it to what's written in the Education Act, the Education Act is not very good about differentiating between the two, so I think that adds to my confusion. So, I was just wondering if you could maybe add some insight, or if even Manager Carrillo could help us with clarifying the mystery behind all the boards?
I'm happy to provide some clarification, and then if Jean wants to jump in. I would say generally across all of our policies and procedures, traditionally, a capital B board is meant the Board of Trustees, and a small b board is meant, board as in board staff. So, the word has been used interchangeably, but just with that differentiation. But I think your edits to the, to the documents have kind of clarified, clarified that piece.
And if, if I may take the fort to add, sorry, my camera's off, because my internet is not very stable at the moment, but the glossary that's appended to the policy and procedure framework provides, now provides that the definition for board means Board of Trustees, and I think as policies are being reviewed, as Superintendent Reddick has made these changes in here, I think the clarification is going to be consistent moving forward as policy documents are reviewed and revised.
I have my hand up.
Okay. Amy?
Thank you. So, in the case of using lowercase b for when we're referring to the HDSP, then the last paragraph of the objective, that board should be a lowercase b because it's replacing HDSP. And under the role of SEAC, I'm wondering why we crossed out to the Board of Trustees? Because I think it, actually, an advisory board to the HDSP and may advise the board on the following matters, because they do provide advice to staff as well, do they not?
They, they do provide advice to staff, but, you know, I know that that was a recommendation from trustee Rocha in terms of striking that piece. I don't know if you'd like to speak to that preference? Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. So, that asked to strike out to the Board of Trustees because it's an advisory board, whether it be the Board of Trustees or the whole school board, and it was more for simplification, that, you know, sometimes keep it simple makes more sense than when we try to add too many words. So, that was my suggestion for striking out to the Board of Trustees, because SEAC doesn't just advise us, it advises the entire board.
Okay. So, then, in all the cases where the board is replacing HDSP, it should be a lowercase b, given that that's the explanation we've been given? Because right now, they're all uppercase B, where it has replaced HDSP, and we've been advised that lowercase b means HDSP, and uppercase B means the Board of Trustees?
Okay, so maybe just to summarize that piece, and looking at just if we maybe, Colette, if you can, I don't know if it's you who's looking at this, but just go through and ensure that when we're talking about the board in relation to HDSP, it's got lowercase, and we're talking about the board in relation to the trustees, it's got an uppercase. And I don't have my glasses on, so I, Tanya? Tanya?
Yeah, so something I just saw in the other policy that's coming before us tonight, instead of saying "board," they said "school board." So, that really, just by adding the word "school" in front of the word "board," it helps differentiate between the bigger school board versus the Board of Trustees. So, maybe that, that's the, I find with other policies, it's very clear, like HDSP versus board as in Board of Trustees, we can really delineate between the two, but somehow with SEAC, I can never wrap my head around it, and I blame the Ed Act because they use the term "board" interchangeably, and they don't differentiate between little b and big B. So, it's not, it's not us, it's the Ed Act, and I will, I will blame them. So, maybe for our purposes, maybe we can insert the word "school board" when we refer to the bigger group.
But, but as a committee?
Yeah, I get, I get so confused with this.
As a committee, the Governance Document Review Standing Committee has been using HDSP when it means the school board, and "board" when it means the Board of Trustees, but here you've struck out HDSP, which is the exact opposite of what we've been doing as a committee. Can we just put HDSP back? So that we've truly differentiated? Like, if it says HDSP, it's pretty clear. You can't say, oh, that's the Board of Trustees.
So, I, I think this conversation that's, you know, taking quite some time, when we have 10 minutes to cover all three?
I'm sorry, but we.
No, I know, but I'm just thinking that this is somewhat of a piece that can be looked at offline. We don't, I don't think we need to take the time right now.
My, my comment here is that we had a standard, and now we're undoing our standard. So, let's, let's put it back.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll let you do that.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other questions regarding the SEAC policy that's before us right now? Wonderful. Thank you, Colette. Okay, next up, Fraud Prevention Management Policy and Administrative Procedure. Roxanna, share that with everybody. Do you have something you want to speak to with this, or is it self-explanatory and just opening up for questions?
So, it's minor changes and a couple of clarifications that came out of the audit committee meeting on May 3rd. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Roxanna regarding this policy and procedure? Tanya?
It's Tanya. So, not, not so much a question for Roxanna or Colette, it's more for Jean. Will these two policies be presented in the new template?
Through the vice chair, to the, through the chair, to the vice chair. When they'll appear on the board agenda, they'll be the marked-up version, as I understand the board agenda will present what is being revised. When they are published on the board website, they will be on the new template.
Thank you.
Amy?
Yeah, again, I'm just looking for consistency, so I'll, I'll talk it over with Roxanna, because using "school board" is another variation on the same theme. So, I'll, I'll talk to Roxanna and sort it out.
Wonderful. She's nodding, saying, great. Thank you. Okay, wonderful. We almost did it in 10. So, we are now up to 3.1.2, or no, 3.2, which is Draft Long-Term Accommodation Plan. Fred, you've got the floor. You've got 15 minutes.
I'll make it sure. All right, through you, Madam Chair, I'll present through here, I guess. All right. All right, so the presentation for tonight, it's quite long. I don't want to go over all of it. It's more of a resource for you as you go through the Long-Term Accommodation Plan. What it shows is kind of the main moving parts of what's within it. So, I'm going to go over the, the new pieces for the Long-Term Accommodation Plan. We do have some new trustees, too, that's just being, you know, up to speed on the, the new format and everything else. So, you know, if there's any questions or anything else, by all means, please let us know, and we'll definitely work through it with you. So, really, again, I'll go through the vision as to what the, the purpose of the Long-Term Accommodation Plan is, briefly go through some of the new resources that are in the LTAP, and then I just want to talk about what the next steps are in terms of getting this thing for approval, hopefully by the end of June. So, really, the big focus on this was developing a document that was a lot more accessible to our community members, so they can really engage with it and know exactly what's going to be happening within your community, so it's a little bit more upfront and explicit as there's a boundary view happening. There might be closures in 10 years. There might be, you know, redirections happening, so that everybody has full disclosure of this is what's happening, and so that when they're commenting on it, they're informed as to the what's happening, why it's happening, and how it may impact them, just so that there's full transparency and disclosure in when we're doing this. And then that way, we have a little bit for a better discourse as to when we are providing priorities and recommendations for the board for future consideration. The community has our viewpoints as to why we're doing this and can also comment on it. I think it was pretty successful in the last one, when we saw, you know, the Glenview Maplehurst community really come to the table and discuss what was happening through the LTAP, and that's where a lot of it had started. Resources here tonight is, we provided you with the latest iteration of the LTAP. It will be presented again to you with some further updates at next week's board meeting. So, the link here tonight is the one that will be forwarded for next week, as well as some brief summaries on each of the municipalities. These summaries give you a high-level enrollment, high-level facilities data, as well as the projects planned within your areas. So, it's kind of the cheat sheet of what's happening within each respective municipality. For the LTAP overview, the entirety of the document's really broken up into five different pieces. There's the introduction that sets up the framework of the plan, and then considerations on the departments that work within it. We give you an overview of the regional halting, the planning initiatives as a whole, what's happening within our jurisdiction, as well as a summary of every municipality and the respective elementary and secondary review areas, and the appendices. In terms of the regional profile, we go over enrollment, we go over utilization. We talk about, as a board, how are facilities doing in our four, our six KPIs, or key performance indicators, being the number of schools, accessibility, number of students per hectare, our carbon footprint, the AC rating of all of our schools, and the facility condition index. So, we use our board standard as a whole, and then we break that down by elementary, secondary, and then for each of the municipalities, we break it down, too, and compare and contrast how each area is doing so that we can target how each area is doing so that we can target, uh, areas to, uh, you know, improve upon. Here's a summary of the six, uh, key, uh, performance indicators that are within the document. This year, or sorry, this version of it, we have set targets now. Um, so you'll see those targets within the document as well as how we're doing year over year on meeting them. So we have FCI, outdoor learning, accessibility, energy efficiency through our carbon footprint. These numbers need to be updated, but they'll be updated in the next document. Uh, the AC target and the students per hectare. So these are things that we're targeting as a board. They're not going to change year over year. They're going to be more something we look at either maintaining or updating once we've reached that target and see, can we do better, can we do more? Uh, so we'll see how we do, um, as we progress through the plan. Uh, the regional profile will give you a lot of what's happening, what's the new development, high level, uh, what are some of the big areas of growth? Um, these are the plans that'll show you what our, um, future recommendations are going to be in terms of actions. And we break that down into three terms, immediate, medium, and long-term. So immediate's what you can expect in the next two years, medium, three to five, and then long-term or is more of the long-term forecast of what we see down the road. You'll see a lot of the pars in there, or people accommodation reviews and closures. Uh, municipal profile-wise, not much has changed here. We're going to give you a, a, a summary of what's happening in the municipality, our enrollment trends, our facility trends, how are we doing with our facility condition index? How are we rated by the ministry versus how we've improved since those assessments were completed? And this is what's new now is that we have the, uh, the targets for, uh, where we are for our key performance indicators. So now we can compare at not only the municipal level, but also on smaller geographies of how does this area compare to a board as a whole, but also how it compares to the targets? Um, and see if like, if this is an area that maybe we need to get more focus to. In all the municipalities, we break down all of the, uh, the, the, the initiatives that we're proposing over the long-term. And then as we break down into the, the smaller geographies, our elementary review areas or secondary review areas, this is where we do our planning, especially for new school sites and then determining, uh, overall utilization. This is where we get an even more granular state of what's happening. Um, so same format, we provide enrollment projections for elementary. We talk about what our FDKs are looking like, are they increasing, are they decreasing? Cause that feeds into how well a school enrollment is going to do over the long-term. Uh, for the secondary, some, again, element, we, we talk about enrollment, but now we look at, okay, how are we doing in overall retention for our grade eights and our grade nine? Are we, uh, are we capturing as many as we can? Can we improve? How do we compare as a region? Um, we talk about all of our facilities on their key building components, as well as the programs being offered and partners that are within those facilities. And this is where, is a little bit newer now, we have this information to populate our scorecards. So what we'll do here is we'll say, how are we doing, um, in each one of our key performance indicators versus the targets? Are we meeting the target? Are we 5% away? Are we 10% away? And how were we last year? So now we can track, how are we doing in terms of improving this? Or are we, uh, are we, uh, or is the area aging? So then we have to take some more action. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, in terms of what's next is, uh, in this LTAP, uh, what's still to come or what, uh, the new additions are going to be. Most of it's in the, the, the version that you have now. The one thing we're still working with is, um, Section 1.2, our responsibility to the Nissasogas of the credit territories. So we're working with the indigenous and equity department just to, um, further enhance that. Year over year, we want to definitely improve on it and continue our consultation and learning with, uh, uh, with them and our other stakeholders on that, uh, on that front. The only KPI that we're missing in this draft to see next week is the air conditioning. We're still working towards that, so that one we have to determine what's air conditionable and what is air conditioned at this point in time. So we're getting there. And then, uh, future, um, in, improvements are online modules, interactive mapping, which actually Marie, our GIS analyst, got something up and running, so we'll have that live this Friday as well. When this goes, uh, or sorry, yeah, Friday. And then the phase development of the LTAP, which is trying to piecemeal this so that people can take it in bite-sized pieces. We still gotta work on that because this is, uh, it's been hard to just get it completed, so we'll see next year. I won't go over this, but next week we'll bring forward the board report, which will have all this information contained. And then the following day, we want to go out for our feedback and consultation. Uh, we'll digest all that, we'll review it, we'll present it to the board, and we hope to come back on June 21st to approve this plan as well as our boundary view initiatives. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. All right. Um, first of all, I just want to say I love the format. I love the little scorecards because for me that is just so easily digestible and like a quick fun fact. So Jean's got a question for you.
That was for the last report. I didn't get a chance, so I'll go off that. Thanks.
Okay, sorry. All right. Does anybody else have any questions? Oh, there you go. Kelly?
Thank you. It's not really a question, more of a comment, but, uh, through you to Fred. This is amazing compared to a few years ago. The, um, the report in the LTAP is so much cleaner, so much, um, more readable. The community will now be able to understand. And you're also pulling in other factors that, which always came into play, but were never part of the LTAP that we knew. So thank you for that because, um, it, it, it's much easier to explain to people when you have all the factors there than when you had some that were out here and some weren't necessarily included on the, uh, in the document. Just thank you to you and your staff because there is so much work that has gone into this to make it such a great document. Um, it, it, it's just amazing. So thank you.
Jean is back.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have to echo, uh, Kelly's comments here. It's, the, in reports like this, they're so data-rich. Uh, can you talk to us about the checks and balances that your department puts in place to ensure that the data that appears before us is accurate?
Uh, that, that, that's a good question. Um, I, I guess the best thing is that we do double-check the numbers. We have a number of eyes on it. So between, um, it's not just one person looking at it. So we have, uh, you know, our, our senior analysts that do the projections reviewing it. Uh, there's oversight on my end as a, as a review of documents to flag if we're seeing anything that's peculiar or that's out of the norm, we look at it. And then working with facilities, I think that that's, um, a doubt, like as we're introducing this new process, uh, there's certainly going to be some growing pains and I think we're gonna work through that doubt, data validation piece as we move forward. So if we see, um, errors or things like that, like obviously we'll report back on it and say, you know, this was maybe wrong or we'll adjust our methodology as we, we learn more to it. So there's always enough eyes on it to make sure, and we're, we're, we're working with the experts to make sure that we're getting the information from them. Um, and yeah, it's, uh, as much as we can, yes.
Thank you.
Joanna?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, and I might have missed it, um, when we were looking at the facility, um, index. I'm wondering if, um, there's an opportunity to reflect any capital projects that are planned for a school or improvements that are planned or in the works. Um, so for instance, and this would be, um, you know, things that the community would be aware of, right? So if there is an elevator that's malfunctioning, um, you know, if, if it's in the plan that the elevator, let's say, will be replaced, that that is put in there or something like that. Is there that kind of an opportunity or is it too, you know, fluid, right? So, so maybe that's kind of an overkill.
Through, through, through Madam Chair, I, I wouldn't say it's an overkill. I just don't think it would belong in the, the LTAP. I know that Superintendent Gaudet has the, um, the capital report that he brings forward that has a lot of that envelope projects of what we're looking to do. Um, you know, I, th- this is a little bit out of my area of expertise, but like those things are a little bit more school-specific and on the granular. So that's part of, um, some of the other initiatives that facilities is looking towards, which when we look at the FCI, um, as a, as an indicator to them, it's, we're trying to drive that down and, and address key building components as well as meeting the accessibility targets. So in this plan, if we're identifying that there's a lack of either accessibility or there needs to be some renewal done to the school, that'll inform the future plans of, uh, where that direction is going to go. So this is more just reporting on where we're at. And it helps kind of guide us of, okay, this is a priority or it sheds light on it. To get to the point of saying, okay, well, this one needs an elevator in this document, I think it's a, it's a little bit too much, or at least in a static document like this, it might be too much. Perhaps in, as we move in the future, we have something that's more interactive and, and data. Like that could be easier where we're not having to update on an annual basis. Um, so i- it's a good idea. I just don't know if it's now that we, yeah, this is the place at this moment. But yes, certainly a question for Superintendent Gaudet next week when, uh, we present it to the board.
Carol?
Thank you, through the chair. Um, I have two questions, actually. First one is about air conditioning, uh, that metric. So what is that a measure of? Is it a percentage of all schools and how many have air conditioning? Or is it a measure of the schools that could potentially have it, given their condition? I'll let you answer that one, then I'll.
So the first one is, what we're doing now is we're determining what space within a facility is air conditionable. I know that's not a word, but what we mean by that is, uh, Google keeps telling me, and I was like, come on, I, I need it for my report. A lot of our older facilities, there's certain areas within a building that we can't air condition because we're just limited as to what the ventilation system for that area is. So like a corridor space in an older school, we have no way to, to ventilate that. Whereas classroom spaces, we would because we have windows. So what we did in our, in, in, in the metrics that we're using here is what areas are air conditionable and what we're targeting is instructional spaces, administrative spaces, and common area spaces. So that's what we want air conditioned as our target. And the metric is then saying of what we can air condition, how much of it is currently air conditioned by that school? And then afterwards, it's an average based on that, uh, air conditionable, uh, gross floor area. And that's what we're working towards. So we're trying to define what box we can air condition and how much of that have we done so far.
Perfect, thank you. That explains why it's taking some time. I understand now. Um, and then my second question, uh, is on slide 16 where you're talking about the FCI. There's a big, uh, difference, and I understand the ministry only assesses, what is it, every five years? Um, whereas we are doing it continually. Um, for some schools, there's a big variation between the ministry FCI and the school boards. I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about what the reasons might be for that.
So in those facilities, and depending what facilities they are, if they're, if they're smaller facilities especially, um, a lot of some of the critical building components like boiler systems or HVAC units, when you spend the money, it's quite a large sum. So the FCI, which looks at what the value of the critical component is versus the replacement value, sometimes that's how you see these huge differentiations. And when we do some work, it seems like we did a lot, but really we just addressed one big item. So that's probably where you're seeing a lot of that. Or, um, or that doesn't apply, just means that a lot of the critical building components that were assessed by the ministry have since been addressed in that five-year timeline. So what we do is, if the ministry said I had $5 million worth of deferred revenue or renewal needs at, um, a facility, and I've spent $2.5 million since that day, then we'll remove about half of it from the FCI and say, okay, well now we're at 25% instead of 50%. Um, and then that's kind of, we, we keep chipping away at it. So we look at what we've invested in the building for critical building components and we take that off the total assessment. These, I'll, I'll, I'll be quick about that too, but, um, when we get reassessed, you might see schools may suddenly jump up all of a sudden. And that might just mean that when they reassessed on that year, we had a lot of year six or year seven building components that weren't captured in the first assessment, which only looks at five years out. So that's where you'll see some variability. It's not that we haven't done anything, it's just that new items are coming up as the school ages.
Great, thank you. Um, there are no more speakers on the list. Again, Fred, I just want to say how much I appreciate echoing the, the comments from the trustees have the work that you've put into this and the way you've made it so current. So I always think of my kids and I look at the, you know, the scorecards. I think one of my kids is a Dungeons and Dragons and a Warhammer guy, and those scorecard, oh, you are too. That's where the design comes from. But it's that idea that you look at it and you see that little picture of a, like I'm just looking, like the, the sunshine or the accessibility picture. It's just, it gives you that quick snapshot of what you're trying to find. And I think that's really appreciated not only by us as trustees, but by the greater community as well. It just gives that quick snapshot, which is often what people are really trying to find. So really, really appreciate all the work that went into this. So thank you. Okay, we're now up to the big one. So the budget development for the 2023, 2024 year. Roxana, Jay, just Roxana and Jay. Okay, you have 60 minutes. However, 60 minutes does not all need to be used.
All right, no pressure, no pressure. Well, let me see. All right, so good evening, everyone. We've kept some, uh, slides in here that we don't necessarily, we'll go through everything today just because we had the opportunity to discuss at the board meeting, uh, last week, a lot about the, the grants for student needs, the GSN, uh, announcements, uh, some additional funding and some shortcomings. So we just wanted to provide you with an update, um, on the budget development process, uh, which is, this is just a reminder for our, um, public that we are aligning our budget to the multi-year plan, annual capital, special education plan, the corporate risk profile, and taking into account any compliance regulations. So we are, uh, almost at the end of the process, uh, last few weeks, putting everything in, uh, with a draft budget coming to the board, uh, or coming to the committee, I should say, for, uh, review on the 24th of May. And then the draft report, uh, the 7th of June and approval for 24th. So we're still on track for meeting those deadlines. Uh, so there's a lot of discussion and, uh, decision-making in the next, uh, uh, couple of weeks before the 24th, when we present the trustees our financial position. So post-GSN, just, uh, quickly, a, a couple of highlights, you've seen them in the reports. Not going to, in the report last week, I'm not going to go through a lot of detail. Uh, there's, uh, certainly some additional funding that was announced, uh, to, um, uh, take over or replace some of the temporary funding that, uh, was provided previously with tutoring and COVID funding. Overall, uh, certainly, uh, we see a decrease in temporary funding. And the, uh, the, the, the GSN does not keep up with costs unfortunately. So there's quite some shortfalls in the grants overall for the sector. We do have some, uh, pressure areas which we'll, we'll touch base a little bit later. Uh, what we see from a board perspective is that we do see enrollment growth. So you'll see our revenue has gone up significantly, but most of that is dedicated to, um, salary compensation that is being put aside for the labor negotiations to take place and, and finalize. So it, it will be an in and an out. Uh, when we get to that point, we'll provide you with some highlights in terms of, uh, how that breaks down. The support for student funding is allowing us to maintain about 77 positions, which is great. But the COVID learning recovery, uh, has been removed and that will have a, a big impact. You'll see in the staffing slides on the temporary, uh, staffing that we are able to maintain or not maintain. A few highlights, on April, uh, 19th, at the board meeting, uh, we have presented the stakeholder input consultation results and provided more detail. So, uh, certainly that is available on the public website as well for anyone to refer back. Uh, what we have seen in terms of, uh, input from our respondents is that there was a lot of, um, emphasis on student-facing resources, uh, such as teachers, resource teachers, um, educational assistants, support staff in the classroom, um, and, uh, additional mental health and special education resources. Uh, but also a lot of emphasis on the programming, uh, availability, including extracurriculars, um, for the following year. So I think everybody is, uh, excited to have a regular back-to-school type of year and continue with those activities. So we take into account, um, just, uh, putting that all together, we take into account what we hear from the budget consultation, what we hear from, uh, the, the trustees' questions, um, you know, um, information that you provide us in terms of priorities. Uh, we take into account what we hear from the, uh, uh, Special Education Advisory Committee, where we presented twice for, for this budget, uh, process, uh, including, uh, on May, uh, the 2nd. And, uh, in, including, uh, all that feedback into the development of operational plan, capital plan, special education plan, and then the resource allocation that wraps everything up with the budget process. So that's how we provide, um, or, or we take into account all the input that we receive from the budget process. Of course, the big limitation is the availability of budget, of, of funding and resources. So you, we have to always keep in mind, uh, not everything, uh, is funded. And so there's some, some decisions that we have to make that will not, uh, be able to accommodate all the requests that we see or, uh, receive. So I'll pass it on, uh, to Jay, just to walk you through. Uh, the enrollment has not changed from the last time, so I think we can just move to the next slide. So a slight decrease in elementary and an increase in secondary. So year over year compared to revised, just over 600 students. So that has not, uh, changed in our process. And I'll pass it on to Jay for the revenue.
All right, thanks Roxana. So, um, uh, this next slide, um,
All right. Thanks Roxanna. So this next slide, actually, so the previous one showed our enrollment history over 10 years, which translates to our revenues here. This first slide is a pie chart showing a breakdown of our different funding sources. So as you can see here, the, the blue, large blue one is our grants for student need or GSN for short. So it makes up nearly 90% of our revenue, along with the provincial grants other, our, our PPFs, with the smaller slices being for school general funds, amortization of deferred capital contribution and other fees and revenues. So then the next slide will show a table of the dollars behind the, the pie chart here. So as you can see, the top line here is our GSN, which is nearly 788 million. Now, this is an increase of a little over 20 million over our current year's estimates budget. And as Roxanna mentioned, the key drivers here are enrollment growth and benchmark increases for salary compensation mostly. The other increases to note are our provincial grants others, our PPFs, an increase of 2.2 million, mostly due to new PPFs announced for early reading intervention and de-streaming. The other increase to mention is the other fees and revenues. So that's mainly our education development charge increase. We're expecting another 3 million there. But that goes directly to our accumulated surplus because it's used to fund land purchases or land transactions. So our total draft revenue here is 873.8 million.
So just on that, to put it into a different perspective, looking year over year, we have, you know, 20 million, 20.2 million. And that may look great on the surface. However, when we break that down, 14 million, over 14 million of that is for proposed salary increases because there's two years of proposed salary increases, the current year, the prior year, the negotiations are not complete. So there is a portion that we have to set aside in the expenses for that 14, 14 and a half million dollars. So when we take that away, we really have less than $6 million year over year and we have over 600 students. And you know, when we look at getting about 11,000 per student for our board, it doesn't even cover the growth. So there's areas in the grant that have been decreased, areas that have changed. In, in particular, we are on the losing side on the transportation allocation unfortunately. So that reallocation provincially for our board, it's using a simulation from the prior year. And I, we don't know yet how the difference, how, how they differentiated between member boards of the Transportation Consortium. But on our side, we are losing some funding there. And there are other areas that are unfunded. So we have expected to see a percentage for cost increases in the non-salary component to keep up with costs and inflation. It was only 2% in one allocation for school operations, but the other areas that are non-staffing have no increases year over year. But we see increases in, in licensing, increases in contractual services, increases in maintenance, increases in all those educational resources that we have to build on the cost side, but there is no offsetting revenue. The other big one being the statutory benefits over the last four years. We are over $3 million short. CPP and EI has been phased in at the increases percentages that are mandatory for employers over four years. And at this point in time, I think we are about 3.7.
3.7.
3.7 million unfunded. So a lot of these things are catching up with us. So $20 million looks good, you know, on the surface. But when we dissect it back and we'll get through some of the expenses, you know, pressures, we are going to exceed the, the, the cost increases on the expenses side than the provincial grants increases.
All right. So this next slide, just highlighting some key revenue points. And Roxanna touched on, as well as I touched on, on some of them already, being the driver of our GSN growth or increase being enrollment growth and benchmark increases, which again are mostly spoken for. Some other ones to highlight that haven't been touched on is the SSF continuing. So that's a good news story. 6.3 million to continue with the staff associated with that. However, the, the last point here on the slide, the loss of the COVID supports of 9.1 and tutoring supports of 3.7 for nearly 13 million in loss supports for those initiatives.
Can I ask you to pause because there's a question? And so I just think it's probably better to have the questions as you go through. Amy, go ahead.
Yeah. So that's really disappointing news that we've actually lost revenue because it's not keeping up with inflation apparently and it's not keeping up with our growth. I, I didn't realize that we didn't get full funding to cover the statutory benefits. Can you just give a little bit more detail? Has it always been that way? And we're just really noticing it this year because of the increases? Or have we normally been subsidized for that?
Thank you for the question. I think that's a good segue into the next slide here on the budget pressures that are just highlighting some of the areas of shortfall in the grants. So, you know, at the time when we were looking at this, we were looking at approximately 3 million, just finalizing the costs. So we're at about 3.7 million shortfall currently. And statutory benefits are the CPP and EI employer portion that is mandated. It has gone up over four years. However, the grants have not. So every year it is part of our submission to the ministry, the ministry's education funding consultation as a pressure, as one, some of the additional, under those additional other comments, other areas for consideration. And at this point in time, you know, we were always looking at about a million, a million point six. And as it's been phased in, we are now looking at 3.7 million. So that is one big area that is certainly concerning. We've raised it with the ministry before. I think at this point in time, they, there was, there, there seems to be more of an interest to listen to what exactly is the board, are, are the boards a shortfall in this area? Because we have been, I think collectively, reaching out to say these are significant and material and we, we can continue to support them without the funding to offset. So over the, the prior year before those, we did have increases in both the compensation and the benefits benchmark. However, over the last four years, we have not.
Okay. My, my other observation regarding special education, we are always over the spec ed envelope. It doesn't matter what the year is or who the government is. But now seeing that we are underfunded by over $17 million, I'm wondering what that means in classrooms.
Yes. So the special education allocation is another area of the grant that has not kept up with the costs. Or I should say with the exponential increase in the needs and exceptionalities that have entered our system. So it's, it's been about a decade, the, some of the data and, you know, the, whether it's statistical data, measures of variability, they do need to change and the overall budget needs to, or allocation funding needs to, to be updated as well. So that is a provincial wide area where we've seen the needs grow exponentially, exponentially over the funding. So it's, it's, you know, about a decade old, I would say. So one of the areas, if they are going to look at something, I would suggest this would be one of those. 17 million for us, that means that we have to defer maintenance of schools. We have to be very lean on what we put in our regular classrooms. So there is of course areas within the budget that will be impacted to make up for the shortfall.
Okay. I know that you spoke with CAC last week. I was wondering what their take on this was? Were they concerned about the welfare of students who are on IEPs?
Yes. So I, I think the concern was that overall, when we get to the staffing slides, there's going to be a net decrease in temporary, temporary staffing. But at the end of the day, these were staff that were deployed in the schools in the last two years for COVID learning funds, for example. So there's some concern in starting a year where, you know, there's a, an end to the autism program provincially that may lead students that are in therapy to be more full-time in school and require attention, where there are increases in, you know, the, the students with special needs for our district and an increase in enrollment. However, we're going to look like starting the year with fewer staff than we had in the prior year.
Well, thanks for, for explaining it. It's all bad news from the, where, from where I'm sitting.
Can I ask a quick question? So I know you speak a lot about sort of the one-time funding that we're losing. So I just wonder, how does that? So with the expenses that were covered by that one-time funding, how many of those expenses will disappear as well? So is there like the one-time funding's leaving, but is it also being matched by one-time expenses leaving? Or is there, just so that we can get an idea of that. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And I think that the simpler way of looking at it is not necessarily a complete. And at some point, I think we put 6.5 million being the delta. And that's really the, the, the difference between COVID learning recovery plus the tutoring supports and the rollover amount we had that we could all use in one year to add temporary resources for, you know, tutoring supports in the classroom as well as all the additional classroom resources and staffing that we've added through the learning, COVID learning recovery. So when we look at that, you know, 13 million, we're, I, I think we're at about 5.5 million that we received in terms of additional priorities and partnership funds, which are now focused on literacy, numeracy and de-streaming, including for students with special education. So that's a, you know, a positive. They do replace the tutoring portion of what we're losing, but it does not replace the COVID learning recovery fund. So the, the difference between those two additional priorities and partnership fund and the loss of tutoring and COVID funding is about 6.5 million for our board. So of course we cannot, we cannot continue with all of those temporary resources. So it's both a decrease in funding and a decrease in, in full-time equivalence in staffing.
Okay, thank you.
So just to touch on a couple of the other ones here, remote learning is another pressure for school boards across the province. It is not funded. Although, you know, all the students are funded, but taking three students from one school isn't going to have any savings in terms of collapsing a classroom so that we can use that particular staff in creating a, a classroom in a, in a remote learning environment. So really is almost all the staff required in a remote learning are net increase above the complement of a staffing allocation. And there is no funding for that. So last year, based on the, the number of students we had in both elementary and secondary panel, we were looking at about 1.8 million that we covered from COVID recovery funds. So this year, I, I think we're still gathering the numbers. It might be a bit less than the prior year because we started the year, this current year with more students and for the year we're ending with a lot fewer interested students. So we're thinking it will be lower. So we're probably looking at about 1.2 million. And just finalizing some of what that may look like in terms of offering. And that's not speaking to whether or not that's the best choice for these students from an academic wellbeing perspective. This is just the financial part. So that, that's a big, that's something that we're, we're willing to, to look at and undertake the following for the next year. However, if it continues to be unfunded, it's going to be one of those pressures that we really need to consider if we can, if it's feasible to be something that is long-term. You know, transportation allocation, as I mentioned, we have a shortfall there, less funding than the prior year. So we're on the losing side of that. And the portable temporary accommodation allocation is flat provincially. So it's just being reallocated, but we, we certainly have over 1.2 million overspending in portable accommodations above and beyond what we receive from a funding perspective. Supply costs, we've seen them go up year over year and the funding has a shortfall there for about 7.5 million. As I mentioned, other areas of the budget will see, you know, tighter budget in order to be able to offset some of this. At this point in time, before we go into expenses, I think I'm just going to paint the picture that right now it looks like we'll have a, a structural deficit, which is something that we've had as a board. So put all this together, all this loss of funding culminating in, in terms of the phase out and the changes that have been provided at this point in time. We're looking at a structural deficit within compliance, but a structural deficit nonetheless for the following year. So we're, we're quite concerned as we finalize everything to see, not only will we lose temporary positions, but we're also looking at having a, a hard time to continue with the base that we have for everything else. And we have an increasing enrollment. We're not, we're not even a declining enrollment board. But these are, are very significant pressures. So with that, I will pass it on to Jay to just give you some of the highlights on the expenses.
Jade, before you start, Kelly has a question.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you through you. So adding this up, excluding the spec ed piece, which I have a question around, it's 15.9 million that we are down from last year?
Not necessarily 15 million down from last year because we've been underfunded year over year in these areas as well, right? So it, it's just a, a point in time. So when we look at the expenses where they are today and where the funding is today, that's the, the shortfall in funding between funding and expenses, not year to year. So this is, this is more of a in-year comparison.
So we don't have a year-to-year comparison?
The year-to-year comparison will be a little bit difficult because the, the formula includes growth and many factors. So, so we've been going up and up and up. We just haven't gone up enough. So we're not catching up to the, so the, the costs are going up more than the funding is coming up. So the gap between the two is getting bigger. So this is the gap for the same year between revenues and expenses.
So do we know how much the gap has gone up between last year and this year? The only reason I'm asking is because obviously we are being underfunded. But are we being underfunded more this year than we have in previous years?
We are. So for example, remote learning was funded last year through COVID recovery, learning recovery fund. So that is 1.8 shortfall will be, I think for, for us, it's about one to 1.2 for next year. That is a net new. The statutory benefits, I thought we were around 1.6 or 1.8 for the current year unfunded.
2.2 current year and then 1.4 is projected for next year at this point.
In addition.
In addition to that, on top of that. So that would be a widening gap.
3 point something, or the gap.
3.7.
So 1.2, just for the benefit of those online, one, sorry, 1.4 million increase in the shortfall for statutory benefits year to year, if we're looking at it that way.
So just in those two alone, that's for between four and five million dollars?
Yes. So 1.4 and about one, 1.2, yes, about two and a half between those.
Just for those two.
Just for those two. And then transportation allocation is difficult to say because they're matching what we have last year. But we have growth and increase in, in our contracts are based on CPI indexing with our bus operators. So we were under contract. So our costs are going up with the CPI index. But we're keeping, we're being flat in terms of revenue. So that's a difference there. So we're, we're going to probably have a bigger shortfall than 2.4. We're just finalizing what that looks like this week.
Okay. So let's lead it to two questions. My first one was around spec ed. So we're chronically underspent on spec ed and trying to make it up from other areas where we can draw funds from. So is that 17.1 million the amount this year? And it's again a gap from whatever it was last year?
17.1 million is actually. 17.1 million is actually the current year shortfall as we're finalizing what we can and cannot afford to keep this year. So I don't have this year's yet, the enveloping, I would assume will be higher. But I don't have that number currently.
Thank you. So my last one's around the transportation allocation. I know that there was just a task force that was looking at the funding model. So, and we were one of the top consortiums in the province about our efficiency and we were being funded based on the efficiencies as a board that we had. So why are things changing so radically when we've been funded on a 1998 funding model with minimal increases and all of a sudden now we're being penalized?
So the funding model has completely changed. If I look at it provincially, I know the announcement says 111 million dollars more, but when we take away that it includes 89 million for transition funding and about maybe 36 million for bonus retention for drivers, which was never in our allocation before, it's actually a loss of about 14 million to the sector. So I'm not, and that's where the transportation calculation ended up. It's based on simulation from the prior year from the consortia and then a percentage allocation for member boards. Interestingly enough, looking at the determinist board, they may be a little bit higher. So it's, we don't know how they allocated the proportion between the two, and that might change into revised budget and towards the year end. So that that might change a little bit. However, it is, you know, it seems to be lower. So we're going to probably have this discussion next year as to looking at optional programming. So if we have a structural deficit, there's going to be some hard decisions to make. And in terms of transportation, will be optional programming, transportation for optional programming, as well as are we going to look at the eligibility, the distance, the walking distance eligibility, right? So that's something we can consider.
We know parents are not going to like that. Thank you.
Donna has a question.
Thank you very much. You just tweaked me when you mentioned about the walking distance and things like that. My understanding at a recent Oxfam meeting is that the province is actually mandating and making consistent walk distances across the province. And at the, at this point, we are in line with those. So is that, is that actually happening? And if so, I don't, I would imagine there isn't anything we can do about our walk distances. Am I correct?
So just to clarify, the province has built into the formula for funding reasons only, it's not mandated, but for funding reasons, they have built in the walking distance that we have for elementary, for grades four to eight, because lower grades are at a lower walking distance. It's just for us to keep families together. We've opted for the same walking distance for all elementary students so that siblings can ride the same bus. And it's 3.2 for secondary. So that's, we are aligned with the funding model, but it's not mandated to stay there. So we can decide to be different than than that. And I think the Education Act contains some additional parameters where the secondary can be higher, for example. So unless that changes, that could still be an option. So it's not mandated for school boards to stay with those. You can decide to be lower or higher. But at this point, we are aligned with how the funding model was built.
Thank you for that context.
My pleasure. Okay, so.
Jean, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question because I know Roxanna, you're with the HSTS Board. And I wonder with the news of, was it Oakville getting free transportation? Am I right about that? Would that change any of the expenditures in school bus transportation that we would provide in Oakville, given that the students have that ability to ride for free?
That's an excellent question. We are very excited about the the free transit for students. I think that is a great complement to our school buses because it allows our students' independence to go to, you know, extracurriculars, work, co-op placements, et cetera. It will not impact, unless public transit adds a lot of buses during the time when we have bell times for schools, there's not enough capacity to replace any yellow buses. So it will not impact our, the number of school buses on the road. But it's a great complement. What may happen, there may be some efficiencies down the road where there may be, I know in Milton, for example, we have what they call a school bus, right? That it's a run that goes specifically for some students in the area. It goes around, so they added actually a route and we take advantage of that. So if there's something like that in Oakville, we will take advantage of that or if Burlington may offer. But it, you know, it will be the one off here and there. That would be some saving, but I don't have anything to solidify that in terms of an assumption.
All right. So I understand I'm on a time limit, so I'm going to try to be as quick as possible on my, my remembering slides. So this one here, at this time, we don't have expense figures to share with you, so that'll be in two weeks' time at the next committee of the whole meeting. So we can provide these key highlights, at least for now, tonight. So the, you know, the biggest one at the top here is increase in selling benefits due to grid movements or or increases based on the provision we have to budget for. The other key items to mention are increases in the maintenance of our facilities, our school sites, increases to our systems, maintenance fees, transportation costs, as just mentioned, as well as temporary accommodation costs. So then the next two slides here will show our full time equivalent staff, the draft right now at this point, which is subject to change depending on our our position. So if we go to the next slide, I'll just highlight that the grand total is a decrease budget to budget of 33 FTEs. However, a lot of that is temporary staff because again, we're losing a significant amount of one time funding. So the staffing piece goes with that. And the other thing to mention is that our base amount is actually going up. On the slide, you can see it's about 50, 50 or so FTEs, while our temporary staff is down about 90. So this is estimates estimates. And the next two slides will compare estimates to revised estimates. So same idea with the grand total being a little different because we have more funding at revised estimates for our current year. So we were able to add more temporary staff. So it does show as a larger decrease overall. That's because of the increase in temporary staff. And overall, it's a 94 FTE decrease from next year's estimates at this time compared to revised estimates of current year. So then the next slide here, as mentioned, the support for student funds are continuing. So 6.3 million translates to this list of types of staff that we are able to retain, almost 77 FTEs. So I won't go through it in detail, but it's here for your reference. And this next slide is new additions based on new funding for for next year. So a little over 60 FTEs at this time, with a couple still to be confirmed. So this is mainly funded with additions to the GSN, whether they came from PPFs previously or new PPFs announced for this year, or for next year, sorry, for early reading intervention and de-streaming. And the math lead and facilitators is continuing. We've had that year, year over year for for a number of years. So then the next slide, and the last one for me today. So this is just a list of the positions that we're losing because of the discontinued COVID learning recovery fund and tutoring funds. So this total is about 124 FTEs listed out here in the different staff types.
And I'll just mention, these are different ways of looking at the slides that we have in the total funding. So really, the net changes are in these slides here where you see, here's a draft estimates, the basis, the permanent staff that we propose for next year, the temporary was the one time funding, some of them we can maintain. So when we're looking where we are today in revised estimates, so this time of the year, year over year is 94 reduction cumulative. And you'll see the permanent staff are going up year over year, but the temporary staff are significantly down. So the other slides is just taking snapshots from this, is not an addition to or anything like that. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, Amy has a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really troubled when I look at the loss of the COVID-19 and tutoring funding, especially for our students with IEPs. The gaps were were greater for those students and they are losing this extra support to help close those gaps. They talk about wanting to help make sure that kids can read, but they reduced our instructional resource teachers by 56. It doesn't make sense. I'm sorry, I'm really frustrated with the way that we're being funded right now. It's, it's not adequate. How do we maintain the gains we made in last year without those staff in place? I suspect we're going to have a lot of really upset families, and I don't blame them.
Is that old? Old, okay. Good, the next speaker ends with. Okay, go ahead, you're good.
All right. And so we still have a number of priorities that take into account the feedback we've received. We haven't put numbers to them because we just don't know what, if any, we can add to the budget. At this point in time, we don't know if the entire base that we've built based on where we would like to be, given the growth, can be supported. So these are very draft slides and numbers. I just wanted to make sure that is clear because when you see it again in two weeks and we've put everything in, tried to fit within all the parameters, it may look a little different. But listening to the voices and the feedback, these are the areas that are currently remaining under the priorities list that we would like to accommodate if we could. So we're looking at educational assistance, child and youth counselors, and social workers with the mental health area, additional support for numeracy, e-learning, equity and inclusion, graduation coaches, student supervisors. We've heard a lot about professional enhancement, professional development opportunities for staff and students in the community. There have been a significant increase in reporting requirements from the corporate side of the organization and a lot of data driven, you know, decision making and and needs. So there certainly are areas within the corporate side that are surfacing year over year. So you can see some of them being identified here. And last but not least, there's a cybersecurity and network infrastructure grant that was added within the grants for student needs. It comes with a guideline from the ministry in terms of expectations, what to put in place, and certainly is one of the big items that we need to add or look at adding into the budget. So those are the the key areas that are remaining on our radar and we have to see what, if any, can be accommodated and how we can accommodate best. We've made some commitments year over year for the duration of the multi-year plan for certain activities. So this is what remains from those. That's about 255,000. That is, you know, one time items from the reserve that has been allocated towards supporting the multi-year plan. So that includes a mental health strategy, staff wellbeing, active, sustainable school transportation, eco schools, and continuing to offer co-op opportunities within our facilities There's a lot going on in the capital front, so we've given you a snapshot of the operational budget for about 880 or so million. But the other side of 100 plus million is the capital work. So capital work is divided into new school construction, which you see here, Milton and Oakville are the areas of growth, where we have new school constructions or even additions, additional classrooms at some, and if they have a childcare attached. And then the other program, the other projects are going to be reflected on Superintendent Godet's capital plan. So that, those are some of the bigger ones that are highlighted here. And we'll have details on the capital plan in the next presentation on the 24th. So we are still, as I mentioned, finalizing all the revenues, expenses, and seeing where we land in terms of financial position. I do have to mention that whether it's a structural deficit or not, the ministry, the ministry's regulation when they introduce the in-year deficit elimination plan within two years is requiring us to balance the budget in 24, 25. So not next year, but in two years, we're required to have a balanced budget or get ministry, minister's approval, otherwise. A minister's approval might be possible on our plan to have multi-year plan, one time initiatives. However, a structural deficit has to be eliminated. So by 2024, if we do have a structural deficit this year and try to minimize the impact on the system, we would have a proposal for the following year to to eliminate that. So certainly looking at some challenges over the next two years. And I'm not sure if anyone else had other thoughts before we put it on to more questions?
So I have a quick question that I didn't hear you speak of compliant budget, which is always the term that comes up. So there's balanced and compliant. And I know up until recently, you've been saying we should be able to be there in that compliant budget area. Are we still thinking that or are we concerned that that will not be happening this year?
No, excellent question. So when I'm saying we're looking at a structural deficit, it's going to be within compliance. So compliance is a deficit budget within 1% of our provincial allocation. For us, it's about 7.8 million. So we have to be under that 7.8 million mark. Maybe it's a little bit more next year, I'm not quite sure. But it's, this year's around that. So we can have a deficit budget, and in the past, we've done so on purpose by adding one time things to the budget to support the initiatives in the classroom, the students, our system, and further the strategic priorities on the multi-year plan. And those aren't a concern as long as we have the reserves set aside. And as a board, we do have a strong financial position and reserves. Where it becomes a concern is a structural deficit. A structural deficit means we're going into reserves to pay for permanent type of expenses. So that's where we need to make changes to our base budget, base staffing. If the funding doesn't change the following year and if the shortfall's in terms of inflation, statutory benefits, they don't surface again, then we would have to make some difficult decisions in two years' time to balance the budget. So in 2024, we're required to balance the budget, so no deficit, even within compliance for next year. We can have a compliant budget up to 1%, and that's where I think we'll be within. But it, it will have a structural, it, we're still finalizing, it looks like we're going to have a structural deficit because we just cannot offset all those shortfalls in the in the grants.
Not good news. Tanya and then Jean.
Yes, so my question goes back to transportation. And kudos to Oakville for offering the free transportation. So how can we, how can we leverage the town of Oakville and somehow use their free services to minimize our public transportation costs? Is that something that we can look into? Is it within our? Is that something that we can look into? Is it within our... bailiwick to actually do that or... Like, how do we go about it? And I think of the example at Elsie McGill High School, where every day there's a public bus that has a special route that drops kids off at school and drops them off at home in the evening. So is there any way we can leverage the town of Oakville to help us with our costs?
So it is the Elsie McGill Transit School Run, I think it was called, is what I had in mind when I said that we could have some efficiency. So that's the only one we currently have. They actually added a bus route, you know, for that area in order to pick up the students for Elsie McGill in that catchment. The Oakville Transit is a pilot still, so it's not something that with a permanent commitment, they want to see how that, you know, increases their ridership. They also want to see how they will make up for the loss in transit pass revenue. So I can't speak in terms of, you know, where they will go long-term with that or if they will add additional bus runs. But if they are considering running bus runs, and I know that for our facilities department and active transportation, as well as the sustainability manager, we are discussing, you know, keeping in touch in terms of what their plans are for the pilot or expanding it to see if there are any efficiencies. But at this point in time, they don't have the runs available for us to have any efficiencies. So certainly on our radar, maybe at some point in time, might be one or two buses here and there. But I wouldn't say that we could expect any significant savings for our student transportation budget.
Thank you very much. Earlier tonight, we reviewed Slide nine and we learned that seven-hundred-and-twenty-four of our stakeholders participated in the survey and they identified for us that which was important to them in our communities. Our expectations continue to grow of our communities and our stakeholders, and yet we find ourselves in the position tonight, learning that we are going to be very challenged in meeting lots of those expectations. And I wonder how we communicate this to our communities instead of next September, when perhaps there may not be that extra EA that we can find or there may not be that extra bus run or whatever. How do we communicate this in a public way to our communities, the challenges that we're faced with and the shortfalls that we receive once again? And I just took a minute to look up the word median, so I was clear on that math term, the median being the number in the middle of as much above and as much below. We learned in our last study on the economics of education that the Halton District School Board was nowhere near the median and was falling further and further away from the median. And so I wonder, you know, where we are again in the median of the GSNs for the whole province. I just, I think this is, we've heard from trustee Collard, this is not a good news report. Time and again, there's not good news here, but we need, I think, to share that there isn't good news and that there will be impact. So how do we do that? Perhaps this is a question for the director? I'm not sure, but...
So maybe I'll start. You know, in terms of communication, so we have, we work with our unions in terms of the staffing for the following year, allocations, and with the schools, the school principals, the school staff, in terms of what they need, what the allocation is. So that happens over the next few weeks. The teacher staffing has already been finalized. So we're, you know, we've had some discussions earlier. They happen usually before the end of March. So the timelines are always tricky because when we get the Grants for Student Needs so late in the budget process, there's things and expectations or assumptions we have to make very early in the process without having the information. So that's what makes this a little difficult. So, you know, in terms of allocation, once we know what the staff is or the staffing allocation is communicating to schools and for principals is communicated to families. So if there are students that are receiving more or less support the following year, it flows through in that manner. And I don't know if my colleagues would like to add.
No, I think that, you know, we always have to keep open channel of communication, making sure that we are letting the stakeholders know where we are at. And this is why we've had, you know, several public, you know, presentation on the budget to apprise them of where things are. And that's what Superintendent Nogoye and Manager Jeff Chantabang has done, along with the Board of Trustees, right? We have been raising the alarm and sounding it around where we're at and what the pressures are. And I trust that members of the public are tuning in, both to committee, the whole, and the board meetings, to hear feedback on, you know, that we've taken their feedback into account, that this is what we're, the realities of where we are.
Kelly.
Thank you. I guess I have a question about regarding when you have more of the information. Would it make sense to actually show how much less we're getting? Because then, even if it's a percentage, because I think that may be an easier message for our communities to understand that we are getting ten million dollars less in these areas or overall compared to last year's budget because of the way the funding is. They, to be able to make an impact, we actually need to not... I mean, sometimes you can get lost in this. I'm sorry, I know you love it. But not everybody is into all of the finances, but if we can say this is our budget and it is down ten million dollars from last year, even though the number of students we have this year is up a couple hundred, which should have put us on an incline. I think that would make an impact on our community as we're going to need their voices to help us in the future. I know when I can't, we can't do anything this year. We have to use the funds that we're getting, but we are going to have to advocate. And as I said, I will be bringing a motion to restart the Fix the Finances Committee, but I think through this process, we need to make sure that the community is aware. And I know the director has said that it's through this process, but I think we need to be even a little more blatant. So I don't know if it's possible.
Absolutely. We'll make some of those comments in the board reports for the budget approval and the budget book usually have the highlights. It's hard to say we're down year over year as we're just showing twenty million dollars increase, right? So it's unpacking all that and showing where we're underfunded. So that's why we give you some, you know, snapshots of where our challenges are, where we're significantly underfunded, because it's going to be difficult to say, as I mentioned, every allocation is going up because we have growth. So year over year, there's going to be growth. However, the expenses are, you know, exceeding it. So that's where the concern is. So what we're going to be looking at is how big the underfunding is maybe year over year. What is the difference between, you know, the shortfall as opposed to the total? Because a total revenue is always going to be higher for a growth board.
You're right. And that, just showing the big number and sharing it out, which is what the government does? Well, it's what they do, right? Look how much money we're giving you. But I mean, as you said, even for the transportation piece, it didn't include the eighty-nine million or whatever it was for driver retention or this extra sixteen million for, I can't remember the other piece of it. But I mean, that really reduces the actual funds that are going to the boards to actually run the buses for the students.
Yeah, and again, following on what Kelly was saying, and then Amy, you're next. Just that whole idea of making it so that the public can understand because they, as you said, when somebody says this great big number, all they think, oh, that sounds awesome. But until you break it down and recognize, well, when you think of that over the span of a school board or over the span of a whole province, that number drastically decreases really an impact because of the number of people it's actually trying to help. So it's just trying to find those interesting ways to get the public understanding really where we are in terms of the funding decrease that we're getting. Amy, over to you.
Yeah, I remember several years ago, we did public consultations led by trustees in our communities, and we attracted large numbers of parents to come out and we consulted them on some of the changes that the government was recommending. And we got some really good feedback and, you know, our consultation was actually more thorough than what the province had done. We presented all of that to the province and it was great information and it really did inform the public. The only problem is that even though we did what we intended to do, we involved the public, we consulted, we got great information, feedback, the government treated it as though it was a letter from one person instead of representing thousands of people. They didn't give any credibility to the fact that we put hundreds of hours into it. And, you know, it wasn't going the way they wanted it to. So it wasn't something that they paid attention to. And I'm afraid that if we go down this path again of doing one of these great, big, huge consultations, I think what we'll actually end up doing is upsetting people more because then, you know, we present that to the government and they don't do anything. And I think if we're going to do something like this again, we have to be careful how we approach it because it's like the number of letters that we've written to the government, this particular government, in the last four and a half years. They barely even respond. We're lucky to get a response and usually it's a thank you for your letter. It doesn't seem to move the needle at all. And so I caution us, if we're going to go into another big consultation, that, you know, we're sure we're putting our energies in to something that's fruitful and not just going to frustrate us further.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, lot of food for thought, lots to digest, and I think lots to think about how we can creatively move forward to try really and engage the public and garner support because I think sometimes it's not always there because they see, as you know, we've all alluded to Kelly, really, when they talk about that idea of these big numbers and saying how great they are and putting this money in, and it's not until you peel back the onion, you recognize that those big numbers aren't quite as big as they're supposed to be. So I think we have some work ahead of us to try and find a way forward. Thank you very much for your presentation. I see no further questions. I'm sure there might be more offline questions to keep you going. So thanks so much for your presentation.
Thank you as well.
Okay, onward and upward. So now we are up to committees. Our first committee is Kelly looking at the board self-assessment and rules of the road development. And you've been slotted thirty minutes.
Yeah, and we'll do it in that time, too.
Awesome. Great. Off you go, Kelly.
Okay, thank you so very much. So we recently had a code of conduct that came to the board and everybody read it, I'm sure, before we approved it. So we would now like to establish some rules of the road, which are more general guidelines for our everyday conduct, especially here at the board table, but with each other. So I shared with you a link today called the Rules of the Road. It's also part of the agenda. So if you click that link, it goes to the previous board's Rules of the Road. And what I'd like to do is, there's six of us here, maybe we break into two groups of three and we, for fifteen minutes, we're going to just discuss whether we think those are still relevant, whether they are, need to be reworked, if there are anything missing, or if we like some of the ideas that are there. And then at the end of the fifteen minutes, we'll all report back and then it can come back to the committee and we will pull it all together.
So Kelly, now you need to be creative. We have four trustees online. How can they get involved?
Four trustees online?
Yes, Tanya, Amy, Navid. And sorry, Navid, I know you've been here since almost the beginning. I just forgot to acknowledge that you were here. So welcome, Navid and Donna.
So I wonder if the four trustees online could maybe, one of them could create a Google link to have a online discussion with the same kind of thing.
Can't we do a breakout room?
Yep. Oh, I don't, so Jean, I think, Jean Carrillo? I think you're the owner of the Google Meet, so if we want a breakout room, I'm pretty sure you're the one who has to make it.
If you'll give me a moment to get that set up.
Okay, so fifteen minutes to have a look through the rules of the roads that were around from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two.
And decide whether any of them are relevant, whether they need to be reworked, things may need to be...
And see if you want to keep them, get rid of them, fix them, what you want to do with them. Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. Since the last time that this came up in conversation, there was a suggestion that perhaps what we really needed was a short list of the rules that are in our bylaw instead of these rules of the road and to refer to it as a short list from our bylaw that will help trustees get through meetings. So maybe a couple of Roberts Rules, things like that, so that people know, you know, what the rules are to make an amendment or to suspend the rules or things like that, rather than these rules of the road, which really are just a regurgitation of our code of conduct in our bylaw.
And so maybe...
I thought that was the intention.
Maybe can I also suggest, and I don't know if this is something that Kelly was looking as well, is maybe pulling up the code of conduct as well to use, to sort of look at those links as to how they...
That's what I would suggest and I was going to say. So that would be your proposal if you, in your group, if you feel that's the direction you should be taking. Because I also heard from others that they feel there are things that are not directly covered in the code of conduct, that they feel should maybe come out more in a document, like little pieces of it. So that's why I wanted everybody to have that discussion. So if you could, maybe in your group, as soon as the group, the breakout rooms created, maybe that's the discussion and we can all have it as well.
All right, so I am setting my timer for fifteen minutes.
Well, as soon as the breakout room...
How's it going, Jean? Carrillo?
I believe the folks have been invited into their breakout rooms and are joining right now.
Wonderful. Okay, off we go. Off we go.
Our breakout room has ended, so we're back in session.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, we can. We're just gathering our thoughts here.
Okay.
All right. Okeydoke. Thank you, everyone, for engaging in that little activity. Thanks, Kelly, for bringing that to us. So now, why don't we just kind of have a quick summary of each group's key findings? And we'll start with the online group, if that's all right.
Yeah, we had a pretty rich discussion about the, what should be on there, what shouldn't be on there, do we need it, don't we need it? And we had two people who felt that it was unnecessary, one who thought it was useful, and one who said probably not, or maybe not needing it. So for our group, there weren't a whole lot of people who thought it was necessary. But given that, we also talked about thinking beyond our own needs to the needs of others, and the fact that we are all different, and that for some people, having a few words in front of them might help guide them through a meeting. So in that vein, we did agree that if there was going to be something, it should be three or four points, not 20. It should, and it should be instructive in some way. I personally would like it to explain how to suspend the rules. Somebody else thought it was a good idea to have in there, and I'm just going to go and look at the thing, to listen with the intent to hear rather than the intent to respond, to be succinct, and to be on time. And those are, those are great things, too. I, I hope I've summarized it well. We did not agree on whether it was needed, and we did not agree on really what should be on it, other than what I've said. Most of our conversation was about, you know, how essential is this, and how could it be done in a way that it's not so many things on the page? And could we have an infographic, maybe?
All right. Thanks, Amy.
The other piece I would just add on about, and thank you, Amy, for jumping in to speak for us. I appreciate that. The other piece that is that we are all different, and that there are some people that may find that they really do need these words, and others that don't. And sometimes the majority needs to look out for the minority's comfort. And so it's a matter of meeting people where they are, rather than thinking about what we need and what we want.
Thanks, Donna. I'm just going to quickly, because it kind of ties right, quite nicely into our group, and I'll let you go last, because you are the chair of this, and I think that's the end of it. But for our group, I'm just going to introduce you, Jean, because I want to start off, Shin Yi, the first thing he said to this is, this is different. It's not necessarily a complete reflection of the code of conduct. It goes beyond that to look at our conduct within the boardroom, which isn't all covered in our code of conduct. And we agree, Amy, and your group over there, and Donna, that maybe it should be a little bit more succinct. And so, but we felt that most of the ideas in it were things that we quite, we thought were nice little reminders, especially when you get into those more heated conversations. Sometimes it's nice to have that little visual reminder. And Donna, as you said, I think an infographic would be a wonderful addition to keep us on course. And I'm going to pass it over to Jean, because what we did is looked through it and tried to combine some of the statements in a different way. So off you go, Jean.
Okay, fine. We came up with four words. We came up with the word listen, respect, teamwork, and discuss. And under listen, we built it out to say, listen to different perspectives, with intent to hear rather than intent to respond. Under respect, we built it out into respect time, people, and ideas. Building out time, we said, start on time, be succinct, be prepared, stick to the agenda. Building out on ideas, be hard on the issues, and gentle on the people. Then we had the word teamwork, share the work, honor your commitments. And under discuss, discuss, rather, we had speak with a purpose, be succinct, and avoid restating. And that's just really quickly dashed together by us. But generally speaking, we saw it as a very powerful way of just having those four words kind of jump out at you, listen, respect, teamwork, and discuss, and then breaking it out a little bit further, so it would be kind of nice and compact. We did jettison a few of the ideas that was on our current list, not thinking that we needed to see them. However, we did not get to the code of conduct to see what's missing. So that would be the next step, I guess.
Yeah, and I think there, as Group One spoke to, it might be nice to have some of those gentle reminders that, you know, when we had Lori Lockenutt come in and talk about those, waving the rules and the sort of the steps that you go through, almost have that visualized. And with that, Kelly, I'm going to give it to your group.
Well, thank you very much to the other two groups, because we probably got the least done.
Well, thank you very much to the other two groups, because we probably got the least done. Well, anyways, we were trying to do, very similar to what you did. We were trying to start grouping them into like things, because we felt it would be better to have them in group. And some of it was trying to explain what they were, because the new person didn't understand what they were. So walking into probably like Shin-Yi, that what are these things and where did they come from? So, and some of them do have history. So I really like what I've heard about, you know, condensing, making less, but maybe elaborating on them. So can I ask somebody from each of the groups to send me what you pulled together? Because we will take it. That's fine, too.
So I don't know that you can see, but our group was really old school, and Jean just pulled the piece of paper off and is going to pass it over to Kelly. Going to fly it.
And we didn't, we didn't make notes. So I guess we can try and pull something together on a Google Doc and send it to you.
That'd be awesome.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everybody. So the committee will get together with all your ideas, and we will try and pull it together and bring it back for the next steps.
Great. Thanks, Kelly.
Kelly?
Oh, I think Tanya has a question for you. You were 25 minutes. Good job.
The, the agreement that you shared with us, this isn't what was printed in front of us for the last four years. This is, this is different.
So I think, Tanya, what that was, was the one that we did. And I know that's, I remember Tracy making that, but I think what we had on here was old.
That was from eight years ago.
Like, the one that was here was old. Yeah, it was.
So the little brown paper that had like the road picture, picture of a road, that was from 2014 or earlier. But the rest of us had the colorful slips.
Yeah, no, no, we're talking about, so what Tanya is talking about is the one that was pasted up here. That was the old, old one. The one that we use today was-
The rest of us had what we were looking at today.
Yeah, we all did. We all, we all had, I think, and I'm guessing that Kelly sent the link to the new one, the 2018 to 2022. So what, but what Tanya is referring to was the one that was stuck up here, which was the older one. So, and I think, Tanya, we didn't replace that, because it was somewhat similar with what we were looking at today.
Using our creativity, respecting that we had a request, have some information sent to our friends.
Somebody, somebody earlier said have it fly in. I think that might have been Joanna. It was Joanna.
We are flying these ideas about with great innovation and creativity by my colleague here. Here we go.
Okay. All right. Good teamwork there. Team grain tea. Yang, so now, thank you very much, Kelly. We are now to that half hour point. So, Tanya, it's your turn. You're up. And we're now going to look at the governance bylaw, committee and appointments, government procedure amendments. Thank you, Kelly, again. You have 20 minutes, Tanya.
Okay, so if everyone can open the link so that it'll be easier to follow, and I'll tell you what the genesis of these amendments are. And a few, a few things have come up. So in trying to do agenda setting with Jean Carrillo at a discussion at the Committee of the Whole, where we reviewed the governance bylaw, and some things that come up that make us realize that there is room for improvement on our governance bylaw and the committees and appointments GP. Jean was kind enough to create the grid that you have before you. And these are just some quick hits of improvements that we can make. I am not going to go into detail on all of them, because there's only 20 minutes. And the, the way it's laid out, it is very self-explanatory why the changes are being made. There is a rationale column. So for example, if you look at the very first recommendation, it's to insert hyperlinks to all the policies in the bylaw. And again, the rationale is quick access. So if you go through it, you'll notice that some of the language, the recommendations is to reduce redundancy, is to properly reflect our current practices as well as legislation. It's also to help clarify some of the language that we have in there, also to identify some missing steps that although we do it, it's not written down anywhere. So if anyone has any questions on the first one, two, three pages, I can talk to those. Go ahead, Donna.
Thank you for doing this work. Much appreciated. A quick question under 4.5. Number one, the change from by no later than noon on Thursday to four days prior to the day of. I completely understand the change that you're making there and the rationale behind it. I think it's a good idea. Should it read business days?
I will, I will-
Calendar days.
It's calendar days.
Then perhaps that should be included.
It's, it's the standard. You only don't use calendar days if you say business days.
I think it's a gray area. I think you have an understanding of that, but the person's-
Manager court maker was the one who, who told us that. If, if you need that, then we've got to change it everywhere, because it appears all over the place in, in different policies and procedures.
Maybe I can ask Jean, if she's available, if she can, if she can talk to that? Because this is, this was one of Jean's recommendations.
Thank you, Gashirosha. The reference is to calendar days. And that is because Thursday isn't always four days prior to the agenda closing if Committee of the Whole happens to fall on a Tuesday, because it's rescheduled, or on a Thursday, because it's rescheduled. So changing it to four days was meant to account for days on which Committee of the Whole will fall on a Wednesday. As to whether the use of calendar or business days, what the standard is. I am not aware of any standard in particular, and I am happy to proceed as the board wishes.
So can you repeat that last section, Jean?
Just if, if the board wishes to have it reflected as calendar days, for clarity, I have no objection to that.
As a follow-up, if this is prevalent, as Amy is saying, perhaps in our definitions, we should denote that anywhere days are used, calendar days are the standard to be used. Just to, parents find whatever they can to nitpick at us, and I try to look, find what could be a problem and fix it ahead of time.
Okay, so in this particular instance, we're saying for business days. This would be for business days.
No, it's for calendar days. And if we define days as being calendar days unless otherwise noted in our definitions, then we don't have to go through all of our documents and change it, because we have days written in many, many documents.
That's why I suggested making that change in the definitions.
Yeah, and I like that suggestion. Change the, put a definition into the framework policy definitions where it says that days means calendar days unless otherwise noted.
I think, Carol, wait, I think Carol has a question. It's okay. I got you. You didn't have to. You're good. Sorry.
I just wanted some clarity. So for calendar days would be Saturday, then, wouldn't it? So we would have to have motions in on Saturday instead of Thursday? Is that the intention?
Yeah, that was not the intention.
Yeah, for a Wednesday meeting I'm talking about.
This is, this is Wednesday. So this is, these are business days.
So to that-
Yeah, sorry, but here you're right.
Yeah, so to that point, they must be business days, because for us to have things in for Jean, they need to be in by noon Thursday. So that gives four-
Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Tanya. For four days, calendar days. So I, I think we need to make sure that we're clear on that piece.
I don't think it reads then clearly, because it says, if it was to say four business days prior. I was counting up with you. So you're counting, if it's noon Thursday, so it's Friday, Monday, Tuesday. But it says here, prior to the day of a regular meeting. So you're not getting your four days in there, because you're counting Wednesday, and it's not prior to the day. So are you counting Thursday?
I'm going to start to Jean. This, this was a recommendation she made. So let me, um, I'm just rereading this here.
So do you want to take that away and maybe adjust it rather than fix it during time now?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not finding the word prior. It says the motion along with-
Okay, so let's, let's leave it, let's put a pin in it for the meeting. And if you can take it away, Tanya, and look at how it can be adjusted for whenever it's coming back.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. And continue your rest of your stuff.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on these before I get into the agendas?
Nope, we're good to go here.
Okay, so with the agendas, this is probably where you're going to see the most amount of changes. And this was in working in conjunction with Jean and trying to establish agenda items. So if you go down to the first mention of the Appendix A, you'll see what's attached is the current agenda for, let me just open the document here. Uh, for, okay. So what's attached is the Appendix A is the regular board meeting. And the recommended attached is what we are proposing.
So, Tanya, I don't know if it's just me, but when I click on the second attached, mine doesn't open.
I also need, you have to request access.
Okay, can you, hmm, okay. Okay, I can see Jean's there and Joanna is there. Uh, okay, I will quickly add everybody here. Okay, you've all been given access now. See, rules of the road. We should be prepared for our meetings. Okay, um, okay, so the recommended changes here are-
I apologize, but I still cannot open it.
Jean, do you happen to know why they're not able to open the link?
I just invited Kelly and Donna, so hopefully that helps them out.
Yeah, everybody should be on it, because I see Jean and Carol and Margot. And Donna, you do have access.
Now it's opening. Thank you.
All right, so the recommended versus what, sorry, the proposed, let me go back to my doc. So what we did here is we've simplified some of the language. We've reduced unnecessary wording, and we've added branding. So you'll see the new template is the one that Jean currently uses. We've also to be in compliance, we've added rationale to item 1.2. So the reasons for going into private session are now part of the agenda. We've also moved 3.1.2, approval of Committee of the Whole minutes, to the receipt section. And that's because minutes of the Committee of the Whole are approved by the Committee of the Whole, not the Board. We've also added 3.2.4, which is the approved minutes of the standing committees, to be added to Board packages. That way, it increases transparency with the public, and it also eliminates the need for written committee reports. We've also-
A point of clarification, please. I'm sorry to interrupt, Tanya. I just, it would help me, and I'm following you as closely as I can. We are talking about, this is the agenda for Board meetings, correct? I thought you said, mention something about Committee of the Whole. Can you just take me back to that?
Uh, yes. Part of what our bylaw, what our current, if you look at our current agenda that's in the bylaw right now, there's a section in there that says that the Committee of the Whole minutes are supposed to be approved at board meeting. So what we've done is we're actually doing what's reflective of our practices. And that is, we approve our Committee of the Whole meetings at Committee of the Whole, and we receive them for information at the public board meeting. Okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, no worries. What we've also done is, this was one of Jean's great ideas, is to move all the action items, so all items that are for decision, to Section 4 and not have them broken out between Section 4 that are decision this week and then under for information when they're decision items that are going to show up in two weeks' time. So by moving all action items under one section and clearly defining which ones are being voted on this week versus at a later date, everything's in one section. So it's, it's easier for us to know what we're voting on, what we should be paying more attention to. And it also allows transparency for the public. And it also clarifies that not every decision that is deferred comes back in two weeks. Sometimes a decision is going to come back in a month, for example, EDCs. Sometimes it's going to, we're going to make a decision about it in a month. So it just clarifies for us and for the public as to when we're voting on certain items. And we've also added OPSPA update to Section 5, as it was missing from the template. So I'm sure you're very happy about that, Jean. So it was just a little, it's probably an oops, and we've caught it, and we are adding it. The next appendix is-
Can I ask a question about this one? Yeah, just 1.2. I just needed clarification on 1.2.
Yeah.
What would that sound like? How, give me an example of what that would sound like in the-
Yeah, so we're going into private to discuss legal matters. We're going into private to discuss property matters.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tanya, just, I don't know if you or Jean can do this, but all of the recommended ones, we all need access to. So I've just requested access on them all.
Um, okay. Thank you.
I think Jean's done it. Thank you, Jean.
Jean's doing it. Okay, fantastic. Okay, so Appendix B, it is the special board meetings. So we're just very high level. We simplified some of the language.
Sorry, Tanya. Can I just go back to Appendix A?
Yeah.
Okay, so the recommended template for the agenda.
Yeah.
Point, 1.1.2, it says private session, but aren't we meant to be calling it Committee of the Whole? Like, right now, we've got motion to move into Committee of the Whole.
I think Joanna's right there. If you recall from Lori Lacanuck, she said- Uh, I think Joanna's right there. If you recall from Lori Lacanuck, she said we shouldn't be calling it, it should be Committee of the Whole in Camera, where public, there's a s-statement. So I can, I can find that and send that to you, Tanya.
Yeah, so we could, that's, yeah, we can, I'll put that here. Oh, okay, I'll make a note of Committee of the Whole in Camera. Okay, I will make a note here to change that. Thank you for catching that. Okay, good. Um, so the next, so, are, can I go to Appendix B?
Yep.
Okay, so that one's really easy. It was just simplified language, reduced unnecessary wording from the template that was in the bylaw, and we've also added branding to it. Okay, so, the next section, it applies to Committee of the Whole agendas, which are in the Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure. So again, you'll have the, what the existing template looks today, what the recommended template will look like. So for Appendix A, it's Committee of the Whole. So for today's meeting, this is what the proposed agenda would look like. And again, uh, simplified language, reduced unnecessary wording, added branding. We have, this is the biggest one. We removed 2.1.2, which is the order paper, because nothing ever goes on an order paper at Committee of the Whole because our, 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 no motions can be made at Committee of the Whole. So if you've noticed, for the last several years, that order paper's been blank. Um, so, because we shouldn't have one, so we're removing it officially. And, uh, what we've also done is renamed Section 5 to say Committees and Appointments, so that it properly reflects, um, the role of OPSPA whenever there are any OPSPA updates. Um, so that's that. Any questions on the Committee of the Whole proposed agenda?
I, I still haven't been able to get in. Is anybody getting into that one?
Yeah, just refresh it.
Thank you. Do we not need to have a declaration of possible conflict of interest here? Because it could still be a presentation or something that you could have a conflict of interest on, depending on what's going on and...
Yeah, so, I, yeah, I can answer that. So during Committee of the Whole, no decisions are made at Committee of the Whole. So even if you were to have a conflict of interest, you're not gonna be voting on anything. So at Committee of the Whole, you really don't need to declare a conflict of interest.
Could, could I just weigh in on that one? Um, I think that even though there would be no votes, you would have, um, ability to influence and, and possibly that you get insider knowledge that you're bringing to the table, um, that sort of a thing. So I just wonder if, if, if it still doesn't present problems for the Board if we don't have a, a declaration of, uh, conflict of interest. I just think it can be influencing people and, and in a, in a, in a discussion, maybe that you ought not to weigh into on.
Okay, so Jean, sorry, Tanya, Jean, clarify, her hand up, and Kelly also has a question too. So let's, let's go, Jean.
Uh, thank you, sure. For clarification, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act applies to any meeting in which the matter is the subject of consideration, not only the subject of decision. So I would advise that Committee of the Whole include the declarations of conflict of interest for the reasons that Jean Gray has also cited, but it is in the Act that, um, any meeting at which the matter is the subject of consideration should be, uh, should justify its inclusion on the agenda.
Okay, so I will have that added back. Okay. All right, so, did you say Kelly had a question?
No, her count, question was answered, so you're good.
Okay, all right. And then Appendix B, uh, the attached is the Committee of the Whole for private session. So that's the meeting we have from 6 to 7 on the same night as Board Meeting Night. Uh, does everyone have access to that? Okay.
I think you're good, Tanya, just Jean's checking. Jean Gray this time.
Okay, perfect. So, um, again, simplified the language, reduced unnecessary wording, added some branding. We reordered Item 1.2 and 1.3, just, it's, all of our other, um, all of our other items are, are done that way, so it's just consistency. And then, what was the last item on there? And we added, uh, because we noticed it was missing, we added, uh, 2.2, which is the receipt of periodic information items. So that's just been added as it was missing from the original template.
What would be an example of a periodic information item?
Um, okay, so it's private session, so I'm gonna be careful with what I say. Um, so just this month, or last month, I had asked for a report. And that report can only be delivered at private session. And so that report would be, and it's now gonna show up every year at a certain time. So that would be a receipt of information.
Thank you.
If you want more info, I can connect with you afterwards for...
I, I know, so we can, I think if, we got it. Thanks, Tanya.
Code word. I have to be careful. Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tanya. Are you done?
Uh, I am. If anyone has any questions, then feel free to ask.
I...
Otherwise, I'm gonna just, uh, go in here and make the changes that we talked about.
Great, thank you. I see no questions here, and I've heard no blings for online hands up. So again, Tanya, thank you so much for the simplification that you've done on all the documents and appreciate your work. Um, and for adhering to the 20 minutes. Thank you.
Okay, we're now up to the last piece of today, which is the Protocol Ad Hoc Committee, which is actually my piece. I did email people earlier today with a draft outline of what our committee has come up with. Um, and I'd really like to hopefully get this off the ground before the end of the year, that so when we move into the new academic year. We have a policy in place that supports, uh, principals in looking at how they are creating invitations and getting out information around events that are had at different schools. And again, to sort of the double piece to this, um, committee was also to look at how we are elevating the role of trustees at outside events. And that comes from how we're gonna be sharing this information with other, um, bodies outside of our Board. So I'm gonna pull it up. Um, really, what our group did, so it was Kelly, myself, Jean, and Joanna, who were on this committee. And what we really did is we broke down our, um, our investigation into what to do into sort of three different steps. So we start off by thinking about what type of events do schools have that's important to invite trustees to? And as well as trustees, other people outside the community, those dignified political people. Um, our second step was looking at what practices are in place, um, within different realms of politics. So we reached out to our MPPs, um, our city councilors and mayors to find out what sort of things they do when they're looking at inviting people to events. And then finally, we communicated or collaborated with the Communications Department here to look at policies that were already in place and how we can build on those and strengthen them in moving forward. So, um, I think I provided a list. I'm not gonna read through it, but we thought about some of the different, different events that schools have that are important or we felt were important. They're not, it's not an exhaustive list, but, um, some of those events that might be opportunities to get the trustee more involved in school life. So school anniversaries, um, official school openings, partnerships with local agencies. So for example, in Milton, they had that big outside garden that opened. People were invited to, um. I said big sport events, so like if they're in the final, I know that last, at the end of last year, Tanya and I both went to the final playoff between Nelson and Iroquois Ridge. It was the final between our schools, which was kind of fun. Um, just those different types of things that we could think of. Again, as I said, not exhaustive. Graduations is in here as well. Um, we also said there are other events that are at the principal's discretion that invitation should also be considered, such as regional track meets, special sporting events, and annual fairs. So all those that, different types of things. Some principals engage their trustees more than others do, but I think getting this piece of information out will encourage principals to think whether or not they might like to involve the trustee in some of those smaller events at the school. As I said, our next step was in talking to different levels of government and looking at what they did. And we found out that there's not a lot of official protocols in place for when they're looking at, um, inviting people to events. The best we found was with the City of Burlington, which they too are reviewing their, their documents. And one of the things that they have, and I, I attached a link in there, was they have a form that is sent, if somebody invites the mayor to somewhere, they send this form out and they have to go through and fill out what the expectations of that person are. So that was kind of interesting. But by and large, there was no consistency across the conversations that we had. But we did find, I know that Jean, when she spoke to people up north, she was talking about, well, this would be a great opportunity to present what we plan to do, how we plan to move forward in, um, creating this invitation protocol and sharing that knowledge. Finally, we had Heather Francie come to our meetings to take a look at what was happening at the Board. And again, there's not a lot involved apart from for gr- for groundbreaking events. And with that, because there is no school staffing in place when schools haven't yet been built, it's down to communications to create, uh, a list of people that would be invited for a groundbreaking event. So we've attached the, didn't I? Maybe I didn't. Um, there is, oh yeah, so the chart, they created a chart to ensure breadth and depth of invitations. And so with that, that is when the Communications Department takes the lead in inviting people to an event. For all the other events, it's down to the individual school. So again, there isn't a consistent approach within our Board as to how they invite or how they determine who they should invite to different events. So, from all of this investigation and discussions that we had, um, we came up with some recommendations. So the first off being a template, which takes the form of some of the information that's in this sort of overview to be given to principals at the beginning of the school year outlining invitation protocol for significant school events. So having them start to think, because if they have a piece of paper in front of them that says you should be thinking about this, it might trigger some ideas of inviting people to the events. Um, the template should include a list of dignitaries that should be considered for the invitation. Um, we also then said that principals should be encouraged to collaborate with the Communications Department to ensure the necessary invitations are extended and RSVPs are asked for. And again, what the Communications Department said is it's not standard practice for the schools to get in touch with them, but if the schools ever do let them know that there's something going on. So for example, Burlington Central's having its 100th year anniversary coming up soon. They have communicated with the Communications Department, so there is a greater breadth of knowledge of that event. Um, with that, so for that, we asked for the RSVPs because then if there is a welcome message that starts off the event, we think it's really important that the leader of the event, be it the principal or whoever it is doing, should formally recognize and acknowledge the attendance of all, and I put invited guests. We're still a little bit, don't know what words to put there because invited guests could be a lot bigger than that. But I don't know if dignitary sums up the whole thing, but that's a word to play with. And then finally, the last recommendation is to share the protocol that we come up with with all other levels of government via a letter or a presentation to encourage representation at events within our communities and also encourage a recognition of those in attendance. So, that's in a nutshell what we've come up with. Um, I'm happy to take any questions, comments, or suggestions as to how to move forward. Again, I would like to have this presented to Board by the end of the year so that when we move into the next academic year, sorry, next academic year, we have this in place so that principals are hitting the ground running and have some ideas. No questions? Oh, awesome. That's so great. So what I'll do is I'll take it away. Um, and with the help of my wonderful co-facilitators on this committee, we will take a look at trying to get it ironed out and organized. Probably not for the next Board meeting, but the first Board meeting in June I'm going to aim for. So again, thank you so much for everybody who helped. We tried to have regional representation, so we were able to ask all the different people from the different areas of Halton and look forward to moving forward with this. So thank you, everyone. Okay, that brings us up to trustee questions and comments. Are there any this evening? Jean?
Yes, I just wanted to remind trustees, and maybe I should put out an email because it's maybe not a reminder, it's new information. But, um, OPSPA has asked for the Board of Directors to sort of coordinate the MPP visits to schools. Coordinate in the sense of keeping a log of which MPPs, uh, are able or have been invited and, and actually do make, uh, a visit to a school. So I know, for example, I saw something on the weekend that Shingy's got somebody coming in. I've got Ted Arnot visiting three schools in Acton. So if I could, I'll put out something to everyone. I just need to collect that to pass it on because this is a continuation of the, um, collaborative work that we're doing in trying to work more closely with our members of provincial parliament. And so I need to be able to respond to OPSPA's request. So I'll put that ask out and, uh, uh, thank you for your response in advance.
All right, and Jean, also in that, please include the student trustees because if you're called at the last Board meeting, I encourage them because HYLS is happening during that week. That would be a wonderful event for the MPPs to be able to get out and see a greater breadth of the population of the Halton schools. So I have, I did ask Ethan and Cindy if they would consider that. I think they thought that was quite a nice idea. So when you're emailing to ask about that, see what they've done as well.
Okay, nothing else, just quickly, so the letter that, oh, sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
Um, recently I had the opportunity, there was a few of us, some staff, some trustees, having a discussion. And we were talking about the night that, um, Board meetings were held on. And just for a bit of history, when I started at the Board, uh, Board meetings were on Thursday nights. And that caused a real problem, especially for staff on Fridays. Um, and then it went to Tuesdays. Um, because sometimes there were actual items that actually had to be done very quickly and couldn't happen then. No, but then it went to Tuesdays. And then for some reason, there was a, uh, I think there's a, something that conflicted for some trustees, so then it got moved to Wednesdays. So part of the discussion was had and, and it was general agreement. People thought Tuesdays might be a better day because Wednesdays seemed to be an evening where things are happening at schools, things are happening with families, at home, and that kind of thing. And I would like to, um, and there's also, um, wondering if it'd be, if people wanted to have a discussion whether, about having meetings during the day. I know it doesn't work necessarily for everybody, but it's a discussion thing. So I was wondering if we could have some time on the next Committee of the Whole meeting maybe to have a discussion about potentially maybe changing the date of the Board meeting or the day of the week and, um, looking at alternatives.
Okay, Tanya, did you hear that? Can you make a note of that?
Uh, yes. Kelly, how much time would you like?
How much time would I like? I don't know. How much time do you think it would require with everybody? Half an hour? Would that be enough?
Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can do. Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
All right, thanks, Kelly. Joanna?
Yes, I'm wondering if you've had, uh, a chance to confirm the names for the ad hoc, the multi-year plan foundational elements ad hoc committee.
So I was going to send a reminder out about that on Monday, and I forgot, because I've only had three people email me. So I will remind you all now, if there are any more interested, please let me know. If not, I can tell you who they are by Friday. How is the Friday okay? Or...
Uh, sure. Um, it's, it's been a while, right? We want to get going.
Right, well, so it was just last Wednesday
Yeah.
that we, we came to it. So I will, and I'll get it to you by Friday, because then the decision can be formalized at the next board meeting on Wednesday. Amy?
So it's not our regular practice to finalize ad hoc committee membership in a board meeting. Um, the motion was made to create the ad hoc committee. And, um, the, uh, there was an outline as to how that would happen in the report. So I'm, I'm siding with trustee Oliver on this one. Um, I, I don't see, people have had a week to respond, uh, if they, if they were interested. I, I don't see the reason to extend it and to wait for a board meeting.
Okay, well, so what if, what if we give till tomorrow morning in case people didn't have a chance to respond? Um, and I will let Joanna know first thing in the morning. Is that all right, Joanna? So if there is anybody else who was interested, please let me know. Okay, seeing no further questions, one quick reminder of that letter that we were writing regarding the bill 98. We've missed the deadline, because I think it was at seven o'clock tonight, but that's okay. We have made some headway. So whatever is organized or cobbled together, and I'll have another look at it tomorrow morning and send it directly to the minister via email, so that, I'm not sure that, hopefully, seven o'clock at night seems a funny time, because they're not looking at their emails in the evening. So I'm sure it will be fine to be there for tomorrow morning. So we will continue with that. Um, yes, um, seeing no further questions from trustees. There were no questions from the public this evening. I had a little quick look. And we almost did it. I was aiming for 8:30. We almost did it. So with that, our agenda is exhausted. And I call this meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.
With 1 minute and 47 seconds left in the second period, it's 1-0 leaves.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, everyone.